All right. We will open the planning board meeting for Tuesday, February sixth, twenty twenty four. This is being conducted in a hybrid manner pursuant to the general laws. If anybody's recording that, it's fine. Listen to let us know. Okay? Um, we will be recording this as well, and we will be putting it on website when this meeting is completed. Seven o'clock town planners reports.
Thank you very much, Mr. Chair. Uh, I suppose first, since we have an audience, I'll take the opportunity to welcome Diane Juwba as our new associate. Member of the planning board. Happy to have you here. Uh, let's see, I will share. That over a couple of meetings in the past week or so have been introduced. Through PDPC and the regional transportation plan to a website by the name of maskbuilds.com. Uh, the relevance of that website and PDPC's efforts as it relates to the planning board. Ties in. Some efforts that I undertook with Randy Brown over DPW last year. Randy's effort was to update the town's water withdrawal permit and as part of. The, I believe that was DEP at the state level, looking at that water withdrawal permit. They look at projections for growth or contraction within town. What we focused. Um, significantly was a misalignment. Um, state level data, looking at job drops. Um, or at least stagnation. Local and transit looking at lenses further and further down the road, but we do see continued growth and opportunity here in Southwick. Uh, part of PDPC's presentations. Zeroed in on this particular website, which does provide an opportunity for. Um, approved users, which includes staff, uh, the commission members in towns to. Input and add some local precision to this statewide map projects. Right? I'm gonna say a need for housing such as your job growth or what about new housing? One that had been approved, some that are contemplated, so they're in permitting. Um, so we have the ability to add this local texture. Um, I'll say why the the meat that came out of PDPC's effort. With this tool, excuse me, uh, is that they have a population model that. Slow growth over the next twenty and forty years. That's about the right term. Diane was present for one with the. Well, that was the regional housing committee, um, meaning they made a presentation and I was at one for. The value development council. Local planning. As we move forward, as we all be take the opportunity to take a look at that. And certainly if I'm missing something as I go to input data there, you're welcome to correct. All right. Some activity to report in the Verizon tower matter, uh, the field of planning board decision. Uh, and with full admission that I'm sitting next to an attorney and I can only speak in very simple terms about legal matter. I believe they were looking for a, uh, excuse me, today, meaning Verizon was looking for a summary. That on the matter. As a whole, hmm, yes. You wanna smile? Yeah, let it rip. Let's see where it goes. Uh, essentially an opportunity to suppose. Well, let's let's sidestep my explanation and say that the summary judgment was denied. And the matter will be is set to go to trial for April twenty second. How's that for boiling down something I can't speak?
Um, I'm gonna change this slightly.
Good, let's hear it.
Um, so, uh. There are two counts to the complaint. The first has to do with. Um, the validity of the decision basically, uh, as to whether it's has grounds. For the decision. That was the subject of the motions for summary judgment on both sides. The court. Granted Southwest's motion for summary decision or summary judgment on that issue denied. Uh, Verizon's so. That's been. Resolved. Um, the second issue in the complaint is. Uh, I want to get this right. It is, yeah, is that what it is? Effective prohibition, is that the the phraseology? Okay. The second is that under the, under the federal act, there's, uh, you can't have an effective prohibition for them to put up. Power that that, um, that would. You know, allow for service there in that area. So that issue wasn't subject to the summary judgment motions. And that's what's being tried in April, uh, or is out of trial in April. So.
It's great to have you sitting next to me.
Not a problem.
I do appreciate the fact I tried to boil down, yeah, whatever three pages of the text into half a sentence and grab the last three lines.
It was, it was a hell of an attempt. I'm not gonna lie.
Good job.
You know, and I wasn't even quoted in the decision on like someone to the right of me over here. Um, but, um. Um, so, but that's where it stands. So we'll see. You know, from from council, from town council, whether. Uh, what's happens over the next couple of months.
Understood. Sounds great. Uh, let's see, we do have a couple of upcoming public hearings, uh, later this month. New public hearings, I should say, uh, we'll be opening up. A public hearing to discuss non-conforming structures, uses and lots and potentially changing the program. Certain's under that section is zoning by law and we go with an application for a retail development at seven seventy one College Highway.
Which is what?
Seven seventy one College Highway is just next door to. Not Rosewood. Oh, gosh, no one in the audience is gonna help me. It is across the street from this Southwick, so much Southwick, you know? And just south, just north of the Greens. West subdivision. So this is the same piece of property, business restricted that was briefly looked at, contemplated a year and change ago for zone change.
Yeah, this is the Palmer's property, right?
Yes, the land formerly of Mitchell Park.
Yeah, okay.
So that's that'll be opened up on the twenty seventh. I may have let the board know that there was a concern from town council. That the restriction under chapter one eighty five, section twenty eight, nonconforming structures, uses and lots, uh, was. Not permissible for the board to. Or for the town to prohibit growth outside of the footprint of a nonconforming structure. Given that. State law did not go that that distance. Um, we see the force on its back from the town council. Uh, following their research, that section of the viola is indeed valid. Okay.
Fantastic.
Thank you, John.
Mr. Sutton.
Yes, yes.
Oh, she said, hey, John.
I said, look, I said, thank you, John.
Hey, anytime.
Attorney John, Esquire or something.
In training.
Uh, seven oh five public comment. Does anybody have anything for the board tonight that is, uh, not on the agenda? Seeing no one. We'll go to seven ten P M six sixty two A College Highway. Now continued public hearing. We have one right here. Exactly. I will not go into it.
I presume you feel like they can flow that one better.
How you guys doing? But how are you? Uh, great. So, uh, my name is Jim Boyle. I'm here tonight representing Primar Self Storage and Development. A new storage facility located at six sixty two A College Highway. I'm also here with our architect, William Ben Birkin from Ralph, from Frank Ralph's Architects, with Chris Chamberlain. Our engineer from Berkshire Design Group. Based off our feedback and prior reading with the planning board and the recommendations from the fire department in terms of safety. We made some significant changes to the proposed plan. We'd like to provide a brief consultation. Uh, William will propose, uh, will go over the proposed building. I will go over the daily operations of the facility. And Chris will review, uh, the changes that we made to help the flow of the property traffic, traffic and for lease for the loading and unloading zones. At the conclusion of our presentation, we'll open things up for questions with comments from the board. Uh, William, go ahead.
Yes, thank you. Thank you, Jim. Um, good afternoon or good evening, uh, board members. I know that we spoke, uh, you know, a while back about this project, but I just wanted to. Further to discuss the interior of the building, actually the building itself. I know we discussed the site plan. So, uh, if you may. I just wanted to bring to your attention that I've been doing this for about ten years myself. Our office specializes in self-storage facilities. My, uh, my principal architect has been doing it for forty plus years. So we're very familiar with the operations and design of the, uh, um, the use. So the proposed building is a two-story building. I don't know if you have the elevations in front of you, but it's what we call an over and under concept. Um, by that we mean you have ground floor access on the upper and lower floor. Very convenient for the, uh, customers to access the building. We have multiple entry and exit points and also loading areas. Uh, later in this presentation, you'll see that we made some improvements on the loading spaces and where they're located. Um, the building is approximately fifty thousand foot. It's going to be two B construction with zero hour fire rating. It's going to be fully sprinkled. It's going to be all the Massachusetts building code, uh, energy code, mechanical code, uh, requirements. The hours of operation Jim will discuss later on this presentation, but we do want to make note that the the plan, uh, will also have. Twenty-four hour video surveillance. So by that is for the exterior and interior of the building. So while anybody's in the building, they will be surveilled on them at all times and there will be twenty-four hour DVR backup. In addition, uh, Chris Chamberlain will discuss about the the lighting of the the site to make sure that everything's illuminated. Most important thing is we want the customer to feel welcome and also safe and secure. The exterior elevations, the building is within the height limit. We're below the thirty-five foot. We're about thirty foot in height to the top of the gable roof. Um, the exterior is to depict the tobacco building, so the red colors. Um, also, it's a metal panel building. That's going to meet all the energy requirements, including the R values of the exterior. Um. The site will, as you could see on the other plan, I'm sorry, I can't really see what you guys are looking at over there, but. In regards to the site, you have your office. Soon as you pull up to the site on the west end side of the, uh, proposed site. Then you drive back to the the larger, uh, building complex at the east end site, which is where we have our self-storage building. Um, I will then close with the interior of the building. Uh, the self-storage facilities are typically with derived on a ten by ten grid. Uh, it's a structural, um. System. It's either, um, a load bearing wall system or ten by ten post and beam. So all the units are derived on a ten foot or increment of ten foot. So, um, they're comprised of either five by fives, five by tens, ten by tens, ten by fifteens. We don't have any units that exceeds, uh, ten by twenty-five. Uh, we have five-foot corridors for ease of access, also for eager requirements. We have two stair shafts, one at the northeastern side of the building and one at the southwestern side of the building. Or actually the northwestern and southeastern, I apologize. Um, so you have two, um, stair shafts. For, uh, eager requirements and earlier it's going to be fully sprinkled. Um, in closing, I will just note to my, based on my experience that, uh, these facilities are very low. I'm sorry, I think I just cut out very low traffic generators. Um, we at all facilities, we have always depict and we always suggest having the high and security system. So again, security is key, especially for customers, uh, um, use. And then also, um, just the property would be well maintained and I'll let Chris Chamberlain pick up on that. Um. And that's, that's really where I leave off. Um, I'm gonna let, uh, the rest of the team. And then if there's any questions in regards to building or operations, I will be glad to discuss later on the presentation.
All right, thank you, William. Uh, so at this point, I'd like to go over if you want, Chris, if you could put it on the main project. Um, I'd like to just go over the daily operations of the of our facility so the board has a better picture of how our storage facility will run. These day-to-day operations are based on our prior experience of operating a storage facility in Westfield. And our manager's twenty years of experience managing storage facilities. When a potential customer calls the office or visits the office in person, they quick survey it down to see if our facility is right for them. We would find out what they're, uh, planning to store, determine if we have an available unit in the side they need and give prices. Lock up or ride along with our office manager and the facility call car. To to view the available units. Observe the loading areas, observe the driving speed signs and discuss all other items related to navigating the facility. It would be at this time that we stress the importance of driving speed and the consequences of speeding interactions along with. Uh, the look, the loading zone rule. There will be two your speed is sign will be set in car and camera view. So we can, uh, identify the speeds of every vehicle. So in other words, we'll be able to see what the car are going to their speeds. Um, I'm going to hand out a portion of our rental agreement. So you guys will look it up over. And if we could actually read, read all of that.
Give me one second so I get it for a member that's remote, you don't mind. Okay, we're good.
So the posted speeded driving, uh, speed in all areas of the property of ten miles an hour. Signing on the property shows the posted speed limit promotes self-safe driving speed and encourages drivers to check their speed. The posted speed limit will be ten mile per hour strictly enforced. Loading and unloading zones are by appointment only. There are multiple loading areas located around the building. Only the front and the rear areas are to be used for substantial movements or move outs. Side loading areas are a ten-minute loading only. Initial move in or move out are by appointment only or appointment only are observed by office management. Customers are expected to use care when employees in who are out of a marked loading zone. Loading. Loading zones are strictly for loading and unloading purposes only. Customers with move in and move out help are required to park in the upper loading areas only. Reiterate, appointments are required for initial loading or unloading of your unit. On violation enforcement. If it is found that a customer is not adhering to the posted speed limit on a property or misuse of the marked voting zones. Gate access will be immediately shut off and rental. And the rented storage unit must be vacated under the supervision of the property manager in a few days. Time, you know, by appointment and the rental fee will be appropriated for return. And so this is something that not only would we talk about when we bring the people up for the storage facility, but we also have them sign this when they came back down with further contract. And, you know, pertaining to, you know, daily tasks. At the storage facilities, I'd like to provide a little information, uh, as to what, uh, our manager does. So the manager starts the day by checking all phone messages and email messages. She will then review all camera footage from the previous afternoon and evening. She would be looking for evidence of an individual seeking shelter in a unit, identifying items brought into a rented unit or items left for trash. It's at this time that she can check the driving speeds of cars on the property and the time spent in the loading zone. So we can see everything. Uh, from the night before and the afternoon before. And if there's a problem, you know, we could, uh, get a hold of people after. It's quite easy to monitor the property using these routines of that. Um, and the rest of the day, basically, she helps finds. monitors the site and creates a counter move in and move out. So her whole day is to assist the people moving in and out. She knows if they're gonna be, so in other words, if there's gonna be a truck up in the upper area. Um, she might block and they they're gonna need three cars. She might get that set for them before they come. So it's prepared when they come. Uh, and with that said, I'm gonna pick it over to Chris to go over the rest of the changes.
Um, and so, uh, last time we were here, I was attending virtually, um, you know, the, uh, board desired, uh, expressive desire to sit with the plan for a little bit. Um, we'd also offered to, um, provide some precedence of other projects locally, um, to compare to. Um, and acknowledging that, well, this project was initially, uh, presented back in May, I think. Uh, there'd been a long delay as we worked through conservation pushing process. Um, so during, uh, the intermediate, uh, we did reconsider the front, uh, area of building. Uh, and sort of, uh, acknowledging the point that was brought up last time that as this building's approached. Uh, what you see in front of you really does, uh, appear to be the front door and will be very welcoming for people approaching. Uh, what we've done is, uh, slid the building to the east to expand this area from previously thirty-two feet, forty-two feet. In order to create space, uh, to create loading zones in the front so that that front entrance, which is going to be desirable. Um, can be accessed while, um, providing, uh. Maneuvering space for, uh, various different kinds of vehicles within the fronts, uh, leaving. Thirty-two feet per line. Um, the, that would leave us with fifty feet in the rear, uh, reduced from the sixty feet that we had before. Uh, and also reorganize the, uh, parking to strike specific spaces, uh, in this angled alignment here. And also, uh, that gives us the opportunity to create a dedicated ADA space, um, so that that can be accessed. Close to this rear entry, uh, and then accessible designated units, uh. Uh, included in the top back portion of the building. Um, we acknowledge that the board explicitly said they weren't meant to. To increase the number of loading spaces versus the plan before, but we have continued to show loading spaces on the side. Uh, so that, uh, we can, uh, look at the relative sizes of different areas. Um, and also provided turning diagrams, uh, a couple of weeks ago, showing both the larger fire truck. And the vehicle maneuvering through the site, uh, as well as the smaller vehicles, um, in order to demonstrate that those vehicles are making it through without, um, crossing any of these striking. Some buffer space around the hard points around the edge of the building. And as William had mentioned, you know, something prospective to keep is the low traffic, uh, level of storage facilities. Based on the Institute of Transportation Engineers, uh, traffic generation in the peak hour, uh, we. We estimate seventeen trips, uh, at the site in the peak hour. And again, trip is counting each arrival and each departure separately. So that equates to about eight or nine vehicles through that entire peak hour period. And then similarly, uh, the I T E's parking generation manual. A peak parking demand of seven spaces based on the number of units that we have, uh, in this facility. We, as I mentioned, we shared, um, examples of some similar local projects, uh, with the understanding that that, uh, this arrangement. Unusual in Southwick, but does have some precedence locally. Uh, and I just want to highlight two of them that that sort of fits. Um, uh, similarly to our layout, again, just as a, as a basis, um, for, uh, similar layouts. And so this is a facility that if you've driven Route ten between East Hampton and North Hampton, you certainly saw, um, going up a few years ago. Uh, there are, uh, two buildings here. Uh, this one is a two-story walkout style, similar to what Jim's proposal is. And this is a single story at the upper level with a total of about ninety-three thousand square feet of gross floor area. As compared to the proposed project, which is just under sixty thousand. Um, and we'll note, uh, around these buildings that there is a thirty-foot drive aisle on all sides here. And then where there's double loaded with building on both sides, uh, that increases to thirty-five. Um, and then at the same time, uh, there are only three marked spaces on the entire property and those three are for the office here. Uh, with the, uh, unmarked, uh, parking available at various entrances. Here the units. I meant to mention at the front. Neither Jim nor I worked on these projects, but, uh, as we mentioned last time, we wanted to provide some context for some of the decisions that were made and and local precedents.
Before you, before you slip that, sorry, just that I I don't want to interrupt you, but.
No, that's fine.
Where are the entrance points? To the two-story building? On that, if you can see it on this, on this, um.
Yeah. James more familiar with the site than I am.
So they have, uh, there's out along this whole bottom. And then there's a pedestrian door here, here, and here are the three pedestrian doors. So it's, you know. Um, they have exterior space.
Let me pause you for just a minute. And again, this is a two-story building with, um, lower level access on this side and upper level access on this side.
Yeah, and then on the top they have the same. So it kind of mirrors a door here, door here, door here, door here, door here, door here. And so they have three, three entrances on each, on each level.
And are both sides exterior accessed units?
Uh, the laws, the lower side is, I know.
Okay, all right, sorry, thank you.
Um, and this is a project in Waitly that is actually still under construction. Um, but, uh, is actively being looked on, set to open relative to. Um, this is actually a three-story. Little with a total gross floor area sixty-two thousand five hundred, as well as another seventy-four hundred square feet of sort of traditional. Um, exterior only units ordering on either side. Um, and in this case, uh, the excess aisles are thirty feet along the side. Twenty-four feet along. A pinch point down to twenty-seven feet excluding parking spaces. Um, and in total, there are about six parking spaces all centrally located to this portion of the building. Um, it is approximately seventy-one State Road. Um, doesn't have an official address listed just yet.
I think they do belong after us on the.
We did, yes. Uh, and it's directly across the street from Tom's Hot Dogs. Uh, and I don't want this to come off as, you know, good for them, therefore good for us, uh, but just context that there are precedence, uh, projects of similar scale. Um, similar, uh, means of access around the building. And so. Uh, with that, um, having to, um, take questions and. Revisit anything from the last time.
All right, uh, well, that. I will open the board. Anybody have any? Uh. Questions, comments?
Yeah, um. What's the definition of initial loading and unloading?
Oh, initial loading.
Yeah.
Uh, that would just mean that, um, when you first go and rent the storage unit from us. You're required to make an appointment to bring your vehicle there to move in. And so that would be the initial move in. And then when you plan to vacate your area, you would contact, you know, obviously you're letting our manager know that you're leaving. And you make an appointment for that as well. And so she makes it within, you know, an hour or so, she blocks her.
But in between, is there any criteria of how much material could be loaded or unloaded? Just on a ongoing basis? Drop off in the initial and the and the final clear out? So. Like you could drive a big truck in there, you know, you can load it up with some stuff in the initial loading. And then three weeks later, just drive a big truck up and load a whole bunch of stuff and that would not be by appointment or?
Um, no, I don't, I don't think I agree with that. It's, it's. Uh, they're gonna understand after the conversation what they made. So if we see somebody load a public unit with only a Leo. On their first initial loading, um, we're gonna understand that they made, asked to have a conversation with them that they need to reset another appointment. So dropping off one. Thing is, you know.
Yeah, yeah, I guess. Check the box of initial, but I'm just wondering if you guys have a criteria of, hey, if you come in here with a buck. A truck loaded with X amount of stuff or. If you're there loading for more than a certain amount of time.
Therefore, you take all forty things.
Forty things out so that and then get in for that one little thing.
Right, that's another thing. That'd be another situation.
I mean, I don't I don't foresee anybody kind of treating us like that. Um I mean, we I we could, I suppose we could. Um but I mean, it's really just people that you're dealing with. So um if we feel somebody isn't like that, we just wouldn't rent them. So if somebody gives us indication that so, you know, we're looking for seeing fair like your grandmother, your mother, um your brother, and all our aunts and uncles to come in and be responsible. So if somebody comes in looking derelict, swearing or cursing and and not presenting themselves as a normal renter, we obviously would maybe not rent that person.
Is your policy to limit the number of initial loadings or unloading appointments simultaneously, so you twelve people wanna come and load at the same time, that's okay? It's unlikely, I'm sure, but. So you would try to
Uh well, if the people wanted that, we would just leave with a comment. So if they wanted a couple loads, in other words, if they had to do a load on Sunday, not a load on Tuesday, we would just accommodate.
Uh I'm more thinking, if if six people come to you, say, I need to come in at two, two in the afternoon on this particular Sunday to load, would you say, I'm sorry, we're already booked with initial loads for the day, come back next weekend?
Uh well, we would just say that.
Right, so that's what I'm kinda getting at. Is there a criteria for how much is too much? How many would you discern? At what point would you say, I need to space these out?
Well, if they were too tall, so if I had two apartments at two oh five, um and one said they had a large truck, and the other said they had a large truck, I'd be, I'd say, listen, why don't we do a large truck at ten o'clock, make sure you have three or four hours done loaded, and move move on from there. And but if it was two people with a smaller truck, and one was loading at the top and one was loading
But generally, it sounds like you wanna have more or less one major loading or unloading going on at a time.
We can have multiple. It's okay. Our manager is there all week for a whole purpose of thing. And keep the units clean. That's our whole purpose.
She there on the weekend too? Same person?
Actually, they're on Saturday. But we don't have movers on the weekend unless she's there.
The biggest moving, the biggest, the biggest, wait a minute, hold on a second. The biggest moving data time that you're gonna move is gonna be on a weekend. And and she may or may not be there.
So the thing is, is that every unit is rented from a moving, uh from a house moving.
Okay, so the next next question would be that you brought up two, two that you found in the state of Massachusetts that look like yours. How many are there altogether in the state of Massachusetts in general? Um and will be confined out? Pardon?
There's gotta be in Massachusetts?
Yeah.
I mean, it may even be approaching thousands.
We tried to provide
Thousands?
Thousand, over, about like a thousand.
That's a lot.
I mean.
I'm just I was just curious, because we found two in different parts of the state, you know, that look like this out of the thousands.
Well, I tried to pick units that were within our close area.
Uh any other board comments?
Will we add on the perimeter? As far as fencing and and things along those lines, snow removal?
Everybody wanted to?
Yeah, so we are not proposing fence. Um and in the uh Conservation Commission, um we had come in with proposals for different snow storage areas toward the fronts, uh which they had objections to. Um and so the agreement was snow storage um to go to the top. Um and uh to the extent when that fills up, um uh Jim would hire a contractor to call it outside.
Well, you'd be pushing it off the off the asphalt surface onto a little strip of grass you got there.
Correct.
And that's where the snow is gonna be piled up till it gets so full, and then you're gonna have somebody come in, cart it out. With no fence around the building.
There's no fence proposed.
Any other? Uh yeah, how many total cameras are there, interior and exterior?
Uh every, I I don't know how many cameras there are, but every inch of the property is covered.
Uh is the playback? Yeah, inside.
Yeah.
Are we talking on an order of a dozen or a hundred or?
Um I think in our last part, we had maybe twenty-five.
And are they reviewed? You said that the the manager, when the first thing they do is they play them back and just see what happened over the night or?
Yeah, it's it's actually critical. Um and I didn't even know it at first. Um but uh what happens is when you're not there, uh people try to use it for sleeping. Um one person was pinned in the corner. And so you would never know who or what was doing this without these cameras. So part of what she does every day, which the first thing, when she gets in, is she reviews what happens the night before. She reviews even the cars that pull in. So she sees who was there, who was not, uh what time they were there. And so she can match up anything really that happens um by these video cameras. So we don't use it. Um I've never really watched them. Um the model apartment, we don't use it for anything with that. But I didn't realize how important they were, so she showed me how she checks stuff and then showed me the guy uh pulling the uh the plate. He put a box in front of our camera on one side, taking that other camera. We didn't know the other camera was there. So yeah, so it's it's a critical part.
Uh anything else from the board?
Just when they're when they're reviewing the cameras, if she or he uh likes to look at a single stream of video at a time or is it like a panorama of like twenty of them?
Uh there's apps, uh so you can buzz through the whole uh twenty-four hour period, and it'll show you where there's movement.
Okay.
So you can just back or right to the movement, and it shows you right where it, so it pulls up right to the movement was. So if there's multiple movement, it pulls up multiple cameras. If it's just one movement, it just shows you until there's no more movement.
I took a kind of a closer look at what you sent us, Jim, and I found that the vast majority of them didn't quite do what I think you may thought they would have. Um I'll focus on the move-in storage from North Hampton. The one that you shared with the two buildings, one being a dual floor. I did the mathematics here to check the interior units versus exterior units as well as the excess doorways for those interior units. And at that facility, um you've got seven units for each doorway. So units that don't have an exterior access point. So and here at this particular property, the map is more like eighty-five to a hundred. The distance is also what concerns me for these access points because of the configuration of what your proposal with the steep driveways on the side and the limited, therefore, parking and access points that are there. You force people to congregate and enter in through these doors that are on the side. And if somebody is parked there on one side and they have to park on the other, if they have an interior unit, let's say on the first floor, all the way in the back, they're traversing a hundred and eighty feet to get to the doorway. If you're moving in one box, that might not be a big deal. It might be a bigger deal if you're moving in a larger item, and that's if you don't use the stairwells. Right? Because who's gonna carry a mattress down the stairs and then across a hundred feet to get to their unit? So I, so far, I appreciate some of the um additional spacing in the back to delineate where you want people to go. I just then foresee that you could have people parking in the back in those spaces. And then because there are exterior access units there, you have people that are gonna back up to them. I pull up with my friend, they pull up in their car for taking everything out of the unit to get to something in the back of the unit. And now you have ten to fifteen feet of space up against the building taken up. You have people parked in the spaces that are big enough right now, but not if there's snow there. Um so I'm still very much concerned that even though you're hitting these minimal points, yes, this got approval from fire, yes, we got approval, it's all, we have the minimum stairwells. Very much seems like you're trying to maximize the amount of building in units with very little consideration for the end user. Um I also saw that a lot of the other examples that you gave had an office quite nearby the units. This, you're down front. Somebody we're gonna have to, you're gonna have to drive to the back. The back of the building is completely blocked. And it just, it and and certainly, and looking at some of the places that you provided and then pulling up those image, those locations on Google Maps, almost every single one of them had a shot where there were multiple cars parked in a spot for that one customer of that one hour. But they blocked egress for everybody else who wants it. The Westfield location, there's one building in the back that doesn't appear to have exterior units. It looks to be all interior units. And it only has one door on one end and one door at the other end. And that would seem to fit with your calculations here. But you pull it up on Google Maps, and there's somebody parked right in front of the door, completely blocking that end of the building. And according to the the site phone, that's supposed to be the snow storage spot right in front of the door. So I'm just, I'm still not yet convinced that this design fits this location. And then I would like to hear the public comments too.
Too much on, too much on a small, small lot.
Everybody else to do.
So can we talk about the fence performance?
Sure.
So the fence, um we had talked about the fence project, and projects all have fence. Um At the first meeting, um the fire chief had nine points of contention for the project that he didn't like for safety. And one of them was being trapped in the back if there was a fire. So I met with the fire chief, and we talked about fence. And part of this project, part of the thing about this project is it's up on a hill way back. It's not a typical storage unit where you just kinda are down and there's flat ground, um stuff like that. It's really kind of up there. So we thought that if we had just uh the fence um with the gate and the uh fence leading up to the product, once you got up, you had to traverse, you know, either cement walls or huge um areas of dirt and forests to get through, that it'd be too difficult to steal it. Um so when it talked, it made only sense uh to not reply, to not to look for a fence up there, because I felt like there was no reason to have it myself for security up on the top. Um uh most of the stuff that's in a storage unit are just really um not much. Everything's usually valued at less than fifteen hundred dollars worth of stuff. So really, the no fence didn't really, it came from working with somebody in the town to come up with a good design for the town and the people work next to it.
Then why do you have a fence on all your other?
The fire chief and there was no
No, 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 but no, I'm talking about the, there's not valuable stuff in there, it doesn't really matter. Then why do you have a fence on all your other projects?
Uh they uh they just ask for fence because it's flat ground. You can just walk right into it. This here, you have to traverse over kind of wet areas. Uh you'd have to traverse up, up like a side hill and then traverse up. And and if you're gonna steal something, you'd be doing it by foot. You you can't pull a car up there. And so we have a gate, you can't get in there, a locked gate. And you can't like drive around, so it's the only way to access it would be by foot. So in speaking with the fire chief, it just seemed like a, like a, a no brainer. It doesn't have no fence up.
Do you think the fire chief's concerns about the fence and being trapped up there had to do with the fence, but more about not enough space back there to park a fire truck if there's a fire?
It doesn't sound to me like the fire chief is giving his okay not to have a fence.
He didn't favor.
I think we're reading into it.
We worked together to come up with a solution for the for the problem.
All all our storage areas have fencings around them. For not only to, for you, for your safety on the inside, but as a deterrent for anybody else going in there from the outside. Now, your, your, your analogy about traversing the ground and carrying off through the woods, if you're a seasoned thief, that's a primary to go for. I had a, I I had a colorful, everybody knows me, I've had a colorful past before, nineteen eighty-seven. And I don't agree with what you're saying at all.
Okay.
Okay.
Uh just something me and Tom, which I came up with, but the board required a bit.
I I just, it strikes me that a lot of these responses are tied to the fact that this property is too small. I mean, it just, it seems like you know, the no fence is because there's an issue in the back because it's too small. I mean, it it, everything seems to be, whether it is the property, I mean, I think there's problems with the topography and how this is, and how it makes this have to be laid out. But I also think you're trying to put too big of a uh a building and paved surface in this area. I just, I don't think it is working at this point in time.
The first meeting that we came in and proposed, uh we brought in a plan in two buildings. Um and that's what the fire chief uh sat here and laughed last week about was that product. So we had a front building, hundred eighty-five by forty, hundred forty feet, and we had a back building in the back, sixty-five feet by forty feet. I met, after you guys gave me a hard time about the fire chief, I met with him and took all your comments, and we changed the, with meeting with the fire chief, he suggested himself that it would be a much better project if it was one building. We made thirty-nine changes that you guys asked us to make, including the one with the fire chief. We made the project because he was, it's mostly his safety that we're concerned with.
But you're, but see, everything you're saying is with the assumption that there is a way to get this approved, and at that, I think that's an assumption. I mean, that I, you know, this is not, first of all, I'm not even sure this is the first proposed storage facility on this property. I think that's been dealt with before, at least raised to the planner before. I I don't you you're talking about all these changes you have made, and we certainly appreciate the 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 sort of interaction and in changing it. But it doesn't mean that there's going to be a plan that satisfies the board at the end of the day. And I think that's the assumption that you're making, is that there is something, and you've done all these things to try to reach that. It it may, at the end of the day, that there's not something there.
Well, we invested five hundred thousand dollars into a plan and some land, and so I'm trying to work with you guys. And you're telling me that you just don't like it. Please tell me what would make it acceptable.
But again, I I I'll go back to literally what I just said. You are assuming that there is something that is acceptable. We are voicing our concerns. We don't need to come up with the acceptable plan for you. I I mean, Jessica just sat out, just laid out a a number of concerns that I think most people on this board share. I I I, you know, it's, it's not necessarily on us to create something that would work. And it may be that there isn't something. I don't know the answer to that, but we're just not seeing something yet that we are satisfied with.
So Mike, we have rules to follow for the interior hallways and egresses of a building. We have followed every rule and exceeded the rules, so we put more egresses in than we actually need. And so I don't understand how you have a concern by, it's literally in the books, and we have met the criteria. Of course, you can have concern, I'm not saying that they have concern, but we've met the criteria.
What criteria?
There is laws for the inside of a building.
Okay, but the fact that you've met code requirements, does that mean a project gets approved by a planning board of a municipality? Those are not, those are not equivalent things. They're just not.
So you're saying, if I wanna build a house, the building law, if you don't like my house, I can't build it?
Those are two entirely different amounts.
Yes, very different.
I'm assuming, I I I have the baseline assumption every single project that gets approved by the planning board complies with the state building code. I don't think that's a big assumption. They're required to. To to say that it's complied with the building code doesn't mean a To, to say that it's complied with the building code doesn't mean a heck of a lot to me. We don't look at whether it complies with the building code. For the most part, we're looking at. The broader impact of this on the community and the way it's set up on the property and all that type of stuff. That's what we're looking at. The fact that it complies with the building code. I mean, I, you know, there are very few things inside that I care about as a member of the planning board. I mean, there's some things that sort of deal with security and things like that. It depends on the project. But for the most part, I don't care too much about what's inside. I want to hear from the fire chief about the sprinkler. It's, it's a bigger, broader. Task we are required to undertake in my mind.
No. This is by special permission.
True. But you have another facility in this town on this exact zone. I mean.
With a fence, with multiple exterior doors, not, not, don't interrupt me. Not two hundred interior units fighting over one or two potential doors that are swing open doors, not sliders. I don't know. So, and this, this identification that we're giving you a hard time or that the judge lambasted you. Um, the fire chief said, there's not enough space for me to put a fire truck and put out a fire and not have my truck and my men up against a building. So that's why you had to change it. And then you spent multiple months in conservation and having to make edits there because you're looking to put. A large amount of impervious surface in an area that already had existing wetlands and a wetland running through it. You had to make those changes in order to meet that area. We don't need to have you come back here and tell us that our questions are giving you a hard time. If they appear to be giving you a hard time, maybe take our questions and make a few more edits of your project instead of coming back in and saying. Huh, we need the minimum of the building code, therefore you have to give me that project. Because that's not gonna work.
We're not gonna go open a minimum. My concern is that you, you, you've made such a building on that lot. That you're gonna take all your issues on and flowing it off into somebody else's property. You've reconditioned the land in order to make it so you could fit. So you're gonna change the structure of the ground by, by doing recommendations and moving, moving wetlands around. And then you're gonna, you've got just enough room up there for them to plow and take all that snow, dump it right off your property. And that's gonna be full of every Tom, Dick and thing that came with somebody who was moving in and out, all the ground, uh salts and anything applied to the roads. That's gonna get washed up into this, into this wetland. I look at all these things. I, you know, I, not only do we decide on how we're gonna do it, but we also, we have a job to look out for the best interest of our town. And that has to do with the way it looks from the street, the way that it was put in and accepted. Did we take something and slam it into a slot because the, the, the square fit? Or did it fit the town? I understand you're doing a great job and you're in a business and you're a business to make money. And the more places you have in here, the more money you make. But it's my job to look out for what happens around that property. And the future of it. Now, you tell the person that's gonna be there during the week, maybe on the weekend. And she seems like she's gonna be putting an awful lot of hours in if you have one very good trained person. One likely, you're gonna end up with a college kid or, or something along those lines. Couple of years, couple of years down the road. Things are gonna change and they're not gonna be as stringent as they are. Because you're gonna find out that people aren't gonna wanna stop moving in because it's too strict. So you're gonna lighten up to, in order to get them to come in and get the place filled up. And the rules are gonna start to drift and change. Cause it happens everywhere. It happens here in our town, happens in other towns. So it's us to operate in that instance to make sure that that doesn't become reality, uh, reality here. Don't mind if we were looking ahead into the future and, and, and squishing your plans just a little bit.
My name is Ellen Boyle. I'm married to Jim. Um, moving forward. Such suggestions and you want us to go back to the drawing board?
We've been telling you since the beginning.
To come up with.
We've been telling you since the first night that your building's way too big and you shrink it down a couple of feet and it's gonna make it all better. It's gonna take more than a couple of feet.
Adding doors, shrinking it down a couple of feet, adding a fence. Are there other items? This is what we are looking for. Cause if you want us to go back and just. Care of the plan, we can keep doing this month after month after month. And you keep, you can come down to us and say, that's not what we're looking for. That's not what we're looking for. I find it, I would find it reasonable to give us suggestions to go by to come.
So giving you as, as much information as we can as we go. Now, it's not up to us to design your property. That's your job. You come to us to see if we're gonna okay it. You do your homework. You design your lots. If it's too big, shrink it right down. If you come in here and you gotta, and you got a, a, a quarter of the size of that and we're gonna go. I think it might've gone too far. We'll do that. But how am I gonna sit here and tell you, well, I, I'd like to see fifty feet around that building? I'd like to see fifty feet around of, of asphalt around that building.
For you to make if you want.
That's what I'd like to see. I'd like to see a lot more doors. I'd like to see more eager citizens, short distance for people to travel.
That is the feedback.
And I said that the first night he was here.
I apologize, maybe I, if I were here, I didn't understand what you said or I didn't hear what you said. If I wasn't here, then I didn't see that or hear that. But that's what I'm looking for right now. It's not gonna get any of us anywhere to sit here and say, you've said it, you said it, you said it. I'm asking you to say it again and you just did. And if that's what you are all looking for, then let us take this plan back and make those changes.
Go ahead.
So.
Let's go, go, go ahead. Make, take it back, take the plan back and go make the changes. I, I'd like to see that.
I mean, I, eh, from my viewpoint, um, I'd say a couple of things. One is. I would go back and listen to the stuff that Jessica said, um, you know, earlier tonight. I think that those are. Um, significant concerns that most of us share. I don't, I mean, I'm, I'm. I think. I appreciated you sending the other projects so I could take a look at those and get a better sense of, of those compared to this. Um, one of the things that stood out to me, I think, is. That most other projects, even the ones we've submitted are on flat ground, right? And you're dealing with. Space that you want to use that is not on flat ground. On each side of this, you're going up. And I, I, to be honest, don't quite know. The solution to that other than I just have concerns about. Having access on that, on those sides that are sloped the way they are. Um, if you look at the, the. North Hampton one, right? Um, that is a similar design where you have two stories in the front and then you have one story in the back. You're not accessing a slope on any side. The only slope, I think, is around that building and it goes wide. You're not anywhere near that storage building and on the other side it's flat. So. Issue with the slopes in that building. Um, I mean, that's a concern because that it's, it's. It's sort of asking for trouble to have that. And I, I guess I, I don't off the top of my head know what the solution to that is, but that's a concern.
Can I pause just for one second? I, I just want to get a little more clarity.
Of course.
The, the cause for concern about the lack of access to the slope fields. I, I think I understand a little bit of what you're saying, but I'd just like to.
Sure. I mean.
The sloping of it prevents you from adding access doors, which would match the distancing of access doors on other storage rooms. So by trying to force this large building and making it traverse those two sides, so I'm not gonna mangle, you're taking away all that access.
Understood. And I, I'm gonna speculate a potential design that we are not necessarily gonna come back with, but just to, to understand the point a little more clearly. So I could see a version of the plan where. We were significantly reduced in this direction in order to create um parking spaces and. I'm hand waving this a little bit, but this is a thought experiment. If um a, a sufficient number of parking spaces, whatever that may be determined to be. Um, so that we could account for the dwell time of that parking, given the long distances accessing a building from these sides. Um, in that case, we would be working to resolve the concern about. Clustered vehicles near the door and preventing egress of vehicles and doors. I don't know what. How much that would require, but let's assume that it's a significant reduction in the length of the building. Um, would there still be a concern about the lack of access from the doors if there were? Again, using words here, a lot of parking and potentially multiple entrances on these sides, but not access. Um, on sloping sides. So that there's an opportunity to park and stay for a while to access those distant um units. And at the same time, I'll say, you know, part of that decision is. The business deciding that they're going to be able to rent units that are distant from the parking spaces, which presumably are going to. Cost less than other units that are more convenient. I think, I, I'm trying to, to sort of suss out. Opportunities to change the plan as well as sort of make a distinction between what are reasonable concerns for the board versus business decisions that Jim can make.
Yeah, al- also to, um, I'm semi muted. Also just to fur- further that too, um, just to make note, um, the larger operators like the Cube Smarts, Extra Space, Public Storage, everyone's familiar with. They have a standard that typically the push distance is what they call. So it's not even the entry point. They call it the push distance because that's anybody with their goods, they're going to store it. They typically want it within a hundred fifty to two hundred feet from an entry point. And that is just industry standard. And as Chris was just stating, if it's anything north of that, normally you uh mark it as a lower rate unit. That's just, that's just, so just a little bit of knowledge in the industry for the board and for uh the public.
As I, you know, to, to sort of go back to what I had said. What I saw to be the sort of problem or the distinction between the North Hampton one, let's use that as an example, right? Because that goes up a slope that has a similar topography going on. The thing with that one is that it's flipped, right? The long side is on the flat ground. The short side is on the slope side, a sloped area. And so they're able to utilize that long side and have access in that long side on the flat areas. And uh, sort of bury the, the, the short sides, you know, as the, I think there's one, it goes around, like I said, about, about the, around the office and the other side, it's. Um, it, it's, I don't remember what the other side is, but I, I, I don't think it's.
It's just like AC in the past.
Um, so. Um, uh, that's, and there's nothing you can do about it with this. This land. I mean, there's just not. You have, you know, you would have to put it this way. That's the way, the long way we go. Um, I have concerns when you're, you know, you inevitably need that long side for access. Um, potentially for loading zones and parking and it's all on a slope. And you have pinch points where you're gonna have entrances and, and bollards, right? There's a, I think there's just a bunch of things that are problematic for something of that size. You know, to try to maximize and basically say, well, we have twenty-six feet. Well. You have twenty-six feet in, in some of the spots, but it's A on a hill, B, you have the entrances with the bollards and that cuts it down to whatever that cuts it down. Like, I don't. It's not on there, so I don't know what the measurement is. Um, I just, I think there's a bunch of issues with that. Again, I don't. Quite know because of the inherent problem with the. Property itself, when you have to put it that direction. It's sort of a Tetris problem, right? You're not able to swing it around.
Right, and, and so. I guess, I, I, I'm trying to be clear, um, as, as we go back and, and scratch our heads. Because. So a significantly smaller version of this building could have significant, thought experiments. Significantly wider access around the sides um and potentially create the opportunity to have. Sufficient parking space near those access points at the end. And. In the context of a site where, and, and you know, William can uh also articulate on this, in the context of a site where. Have single digits of um. Units in use at any one time. I'm wondering if that still raises concerns about having the lack of access. If, if we, if we wave our magic wand and create significant space around the edges and. Um, create parking so that we're not creating a potential congestion issue right around. Uh, up close to the building so that uh any potential vehicles can get through. I'm just trying to, to zero in on, on that, the, the issue of not having access on the sides.
I, I just, I think you have. Two problems which butt heads pretty well and I, I don't off the top of my head know the solution to it, which is that. You need a number of access points to, to realistically uh allow for. The number of units that you want to have in there, storage units in there to talk, you know, you can't just have one entrance for all those things. Um, and so. It, you have that problem where you need a, you, you should have a bunch of different access points. But the, the problem is that. The, the point where you, the biggest span that you have to put those access. Big slope.
Yeah. I.
I mean, I.
I a hundred percent agree with the second point is that. I, day one, I said, gee, this would be great if we could turn this whole site sideways, but that's, that's not the reality that we live in. Um, and I guess the, I, I guess where I would get to is with. I guess what the. Um, the site plan criteria about having. Short distances to units on the inside. That's the, unfortunately, that's the most polite way I can put it. Um. That if we've got sufficient entrances for building code and. That are obnoxiously far from the door, is that not a decision for Jim to see whether he can rent them?
To the impact, the, not to the extent that it hasn't. On uh vehicles standing and loading and, you know, to the, to the. To the extent that it impacts human behavior. It becomes a problem for the planning board, if that makes any sense. I, I think. The way you set it up. Would influence the way people behave. Um, and so. I think that's part of it. I don't, I, you know.
Uh, again, so just further the, the conversation and nothing has to be, you know, discussed and uh approved yet, obviously. But um, we do have the loading doors on each side of the building. So we do have the shorthand side of the building. We have it on the west and the east. They're the sliding doors. So like you said, the locations of those will influence how they enter the building. Will they wanna go to a man door? Potentially not. If it's closer to the unit, potentially yes. But um, if we went to go back to the drawing board and say if we had a little bit more than one or two loading or unloading spaces in that area. I think that would be um, you know, of consideration and maybe dictate, okay, this is where you should, can enter and where you, you cannot enter. Um, I do not see that there's ever gonna be more than. Maybe five to six people at a time and that'll be at the heightened time of the year, um, maybe seasonal or whatnot, but um. I'm just trying to take what you guys are saying as well and then trying to just. Have the conversation of maybe something that we can uh, you know, both agree or all agree upon. Is that something that we're, that we're discussing? Like the, cause I don't think the push distance is an issue. As long as you're able to have the standing or parking to be at the area to do so. Cause I think what was discussed earlier is that, hey, if someone's at that one spot, you're gonna wanna park right next to them no matter what, even if it's not a parking spot, just because your unit's closest to it.
Uh, well, anybody on board wanna?
I guess one question, ju- just in my mind, just of what was said here. Earlier, we threw out a number of seventeen trips. Per hour peak, right? Now we're saying, well, there's gonna be five people there or so max at any one time. Those numbers seem to not square with me.
Seventeen trips counts one entry and one exit.
That's, that gets you to eight and a half to nine, if everybody's in and out in an hour.
Mm-hmm, correct.
I'm not so sure that that's. But as far as they gotta walk with their stuff, I'm guessing that's probably not exactly the case. So I'm thinking more. But as far as they gotta walk with their stuff, I'm guessing that's probably not exactly the case. So I'm thinking more, what I'm saying is. There's definitely not five or six people there. There's probably at least nine, and I'm thinking maybe it's more like twelve to fifteen. At least that's what's kind of going in my mind.
You have all, you have your rental agreements and you have your rules and you have your cameras and your structure. Next year, something happens and you decide to sell a place, and that guy that buys it isn't gonna have the same thing you have. And we're right back here to square one with nothing to do about it. You can't tell me that's never, that's that's not a possibility of happening. You're in the business, you you you're in the business to make money, you buy, you sell, you build, and we have to, we. I'm not gonna take a promise that you're gonna be here for the rest of your life. But I'm just worried that you do decide to sell within a couple of years, and the next people that buy this place are not gonna have the heart you have. And they're just gonna do people whatever they wanna do. And then now we're back to here, but we have no feeling for the fight. So if we don't set ourselves up for the future, nobody else is gonna.
Why don't we open it up to town officials? Any town officials have any comments or questions? No, okay. Any public comments or questions? And let me just read in, there is one, right? Okay. So let me just read in these comments so that they're on the record and folks can respond to them. Sure on what she wants to say. So this is a dated email dated January twenty third. From Patty Reardon, who is with additional attic stores. Good evening, I was unable to attend or view the last meeting on January ninth. I did watch the recording, wanted to just clarify a few things that were brought up. Mr. Boyle states he will not be putting in a fence. A additional attic. Storage was required to have a fence and decorative iron gate and fence facing the street. Southwick self-storage also has a fence. In all fairness, he should be held to the same standards. B, Jim states that there is no theft threat, stated that the lights would be off after hours. The youths don't usually use the front door, a nice wooden area to hide in, no lights, no fence, sounds very inviting. Two, Mr. Boyle stated that the usual spacing of roadways in between buildings and. The other facilities in town was twenty five feet. In fact, additional attic storage has thirty feet between each building and on all roadways, plus a forty foot. Grass area alongside of the roadways. Three, snow removal from our road, it's our grass area. I don't see how twenty feet in the back will contain all of the snow. I know how much snow it takes up at our facility. I know how much the snow takes up at our facility. At a previous meeting, Mr. Boyle stated that he could dispose of it over the edge, which would be off its property. Mass laws also state that snow cannot be put into a retention area. A, does this building have gutters? Where is the snow from his roof going? Four, Mr. Boyle states that there will be a maximum of four to six people per day. On average, that is true for my seventy six units currently. He will have many more units. How many? No. A, he also states that tenants are only at the units for approximately fifteen minutes at a time. That is true about fifty percent of the time. You also have to add in the time it's. Is going to take for tenants just to get to their unit at the back end of its facility for several trips. B, I find that tenants will come with multiple cars and partially empty their unit into the roadway to find something. Yes, if a manager is on site, they can run out and speak to the tenant, but the items are already out. The tenants are going to argue and it'll take time to put everything back into the unit. Manager can explain the rules, but they still may not be followed. Having thirty foot roadway allows for passage even when tenants spread out. Also, if the units are accessible until ten P M. and weekends, there will be hours when the manager will not be available to reinforce the roofs. C, tenants arriving with a U-Haul truck or trailer will arrive with multiple cars. Helpers as well. Belongings will be coming out of the rental truck. Tenant's car and back's pickup trucks. If the loading zone areas are designed for five vehicles. One tenant moving in will potentially take up that whole space. It's not like a parking lot. Doors will be open with boxes being removed from them. It take up extra space. Beginning and end of each month will be the busiest with move outs, even as moving in this Friday alone. How does it have enough space accessible for the busy towns? Five. Tenants want to be as close to the door as possible. They are going to park at the side doors. Again, with doors open and items being removed slash added from them. This will be very hard with a narrower way, especially in the winter when there will be snow on the edges. Also, the area with the stairs and and bollards takes away from the roadway footage even more. Six, what is the interior layout? Mr. Boyle, you have to show one so that you can see how the tenants will be moving around inside. Egress issues and an idea of how many units slash tenants there are going to be. Seven, the boards have yet to see a photo of the office area. Doesn't meet the criteria for the design guidelines. We certainly were told what we could and could not look like. Needs to look at everything Mr. Boyle is proposing with the idea that he will most likely be selling it soon. How will things work if the new owner runs it remotely without a manager on site? He also makes a strong statement that they're here for Southwick and it will be a family owned business. He purchased land in Westfield in October twenty twenty, built first choice self-storage in twenty twenty one, and sold the property at Giver Self-Storage in June of twenty twenty two. He's also building a facility in Greenfield. They do not live in Southwick. Their main businesses are in South Hadley and they live in Southham. It's hard for me to be critical about this pro. This project as it makes it appear that we don't want the competitor. Mr. Boyle has been pushing hard from every direction, asking for allowances everywhere, starting off with the appeals board. He can have a successful storage business there without pushing the limits for everything. He's just into greed at this point. Additional attic had a very hard fight getting the approval of our location. We had to make big allowances to follow all the town bylaws and planning board requests. Yes, we are also in the wellhead protection area, but fifty percent of our battle had nothing to do with that. We are only asking that Mr. Boyle's project be required to follow the same criteria. I bet, attached pictures of tenant behavior at our facility, all occurring during one week's time, discussions have been had with tenants, they just repeat it when the office is closed. I hope I have given you some insight and clarification. I feel that railways are going to cause big problems down the road. He is going to build. Sort of build, sell, and wipe his hands of it. I'll pass that down. All I reuse is email number two, which is much shorter, thankfully. Andy asked me to send, this is January twenty fourth. From Patty Reardon. Andy asked me to send you the attached photo. It's an aerial photo of the now. Gibber self-storage in Westfield that Jim Boyle built in twenty twenty one and then promptly sold. In the photo, you can see another example of how tenants use. Their units. Three cars are parked for the one unit open. Southwick, where do tenants park for access to units on the first floor? They're not gonna park in the loading zone in the back on the upper level. Appreciate it. Chief, go ahead.
Oh, good afternoon and thank you. Just a couple of concerns. First of all, I agree with Dave Sutton that there is a concern for hazardous materials in this particular site. If you have a flat surface, hazardous materials are gonna be contained on that flat surface with this sloping property. It definitely adds to some of the the concerns about what's being stored inside. Mr. Boyle had talked about surveillance and what they do for for people that decide to reside there. Or, you know, poor public behavior, but is there anything being done to control what goes into these units? Secondly, the culvert going over the wetlands area is a major concern of mine. And making sure that it has the load capacity, only because several other. Remote projects have been built in the past in Southwick, some of it with, you know, prior to the regulations that we currently have. That really can't support a lot of the fire apparatus that we would need. There's talk about making this look aesthetically pleasing to look more like the landscape of Southwick. And it goes without saying that any of the barns in Southwick are about fifty feet wide and two hundred feet long. And they serve a purpose, and there's still plenty of storage inside of those units. I think what's happening here in in the fire service, we don't stick with a bad plan. We have to change quickly. And I think that this is a bad plan that's been proposed and trying to build a massive building. On every square inch of buildable property, so much so that it compromises public safety and we have discussions about fences. And road accesses and parking spots and egress tenant out of this building. I think a redesign on the structure itself would yield satisfaction for a lot of the people involved in this discussion going forward. And it certainly would be a lot more, you know, pleasing aesthetically within the town. Mr. Boyle and I had a couple of conversations early on in the beginning of this process. And I spent, you know, nearly twenty years in construction, and I asked him the question why he was building two buildings. It was never my design to come up with a single building and build on, you know, all the properties building on. It was just more of a question. So I do need to, you know, take issue with some of the fact that from time to time. It seems like the fire department was involved in the design of this project. We weren't. We had some concerns. Most of those have been addressed going forward. As far as the fence is concerned, I think the easiest way to get around that is to make the building smaller, one way or the other. I can't help but think about this project being equivalent to Alcatraz, where they built the biggest building possible on an island for a purpose. And the purpose was to put everything on the inside and nothing on the outside. So going forward, I hope that they, everybody that's involved takes a few minutes to look at this current design and realize that there's probably a better way.
Thank you, chief. All right, any other public comments? All right. Seeing none. Let me turn to the applicant since I didn't just read in those comments if you wanted to. Or anything else that was raised. Feel free to jump in now if you want, if you were your team members.
I just didn't wanna make a clarification on the culvert, because that is a very important point. So at this point on our site plan for a permit application. We have the culvert designed per standard details from Precaster that that we'll be working with to construct it. As is typical with this sort of construction, and this will be true with the retaining walls and the culvert. Part of the construction contract will include stamped engineering plans by a Massachusetts structural engineer. Showing that all of those structures are meeting the loading requirements, and we're certainly going to include in. In the construction drawings that that loading needs to meet the. Presumably, we do H twenty loading, but we can consult with the fire department to determine the the exact loading to ensure that we have. Stamp documentation that everything meets that way, and should we eventually come to an approval, we'd certainly want to. Be open to including that as a condition.
Thank you. All right, anything else from the board? So I mean, I guess here's my opinion at this point in time. I think. So. I do wonder whether. Maybe the next step is to. Sort of have an open. A somewhat of an open dialogue, I suppose, right? Which is, I mean, you've heard the concerns here tonight. I think it's worthwhile to sort of take those, go back and discuss them. I think that. I won't speak for anyone, but I think. You can certainly reach out to John. I suspect you could probably reach out to. You know, we could designate someone from the board to sort of have a discussion and be willing to sort of have a, you know, at least provide some sense of. You know, initial thoughts about about proposals or things like that to sort of help. Move it along, to sort of look at it, and so, and have a little bit of a open dialogue before coming back and putting it off to the next. Meeting. That's my, that's my suggestion that right now, I mean, I'm certainly willing to. Close the meeting, but at some point, I I, I mean, I do think we. I think it's would be appropriate to at least. See if there's a way around what everything that we're discussing tonight and see if there's a way forward. That is acceptable to the board as well as. You know, acceptable from a business standpoint for you folks, right? I mean, that's that's part of it that we obviously can't. Factor in, but you have to make that decision yourself, right? So we can make our suggestions, but it may come to a point where it's not. Viable as a business.
Well, all all products are actually. Formed between the planning board here and developer. My two previous projects were idea through both people. And we settled on it. We didn't push any agenda. We. Worked with the board, we worked with the fire department, the police department, the planner. Especially the planner to help us, guide us on what to do.
Like I said, I'm. Leave it open and see if there's a path forward. I I I. You know, I am being as sincere as I can. I mean, I just, I I do, if there is a path. I have no, you know, we have no problem. Approving something. We we, there's frankly, there's very few things we we've not approved in this town. You know, I think we're pretty friendly to businesses coming in. But we do have an obligation under the bylaws to sort of make sure that we are protecting the community and we have some concerns about this, but I think it's. I I don't think we're to a point where there's no chance of success. But I think it needs to be, there needs to be a discussion that we had if you still want to do it, you know, I. Question would be to. See if we can make some progress in the meantime. So. Does that sound like a reasonable plan? Okay.
I appreciate the the possibility of sort of informal communication as well, so you mentioned designating someone so it could be just. Determine that sort of. Or we can work through John.
I mean, I would work through John and find, you know. Whether he discusses it or me or someone else, I just know my schedule of the next couple of weeks is not lovely, so I didn't wanna sort of commit myself. Knowing that I'll probably have to bail on it, but I think John could kind of work who's available and.
Didn't wanna leave without that.
No, it's a fair, it's a fair thing to not leave open when you walk out of. All right, so do I, when's our next one? All right, do I hear a motion to continue six sixty two way College Highway to seven ten P M. on February twenty seventh?
Dave's been so moved.
Dick Ottinger, second.
Do a roll call vote, Michael Doherty, aye.
Dave's been a aye.
Seven twenty. After the way that select board meeting went, I feel like the need to have one up dog and make it even longer.
I think we still would appreciate it. Nonetheless, let's see, we received a continuous request. This afternoon from Nina Fazio or Levek Associates. Last meeting day, we're looking to continue the twenty third. We just bumped it one meeting at a time. So on behalf of African Privateer, Andre Muslewski. Levek Social Hearing Question, Town South of Planning Board, continue the public hearing schedule for this evening, Tuesday, Jan twenty third. To the second regular and scheduled planning board meeting for. To the second regular and scheduled planning board meeting February.
You have a. Sense of this one? Whether it's like the going number.
As appropriate as I may feel, the use would be on file college highway. We have seen no new information since the last.
Okay.
Correspondence from our former owners.
Fair enough. But it was a good non. Alright, so I think we just will put it up to the front and then if it gets continued, that's fine. So do I hear a motion to continue two fifty college highway to seven fifteen P M on February twenty seven?
Dave Spina so moved.
Dick Ottinger second.
Do a roll call vote, Michael Doherty, aye.
Dave Spina, aye.
Dick Ottinger, aye.
Okay. Seven thirty P M. Getting closer, planning board review and discussion of the Southwick twenty forty master plan final draft. Consideration of its adoption, continued public here.
Mister Chairman and members of the planning board, this is the part of meeting where things will go rather quickly. Since the last meeting, I couldn't have any some struggles with. My computer. So much so that we've worked with the town's consultant. After getting nervous about not hearing back from Mister Comia. I went fishing trying to figure out what's happening, what's going on, and I discovered more than a handful of emails just sitting and waiting. For someone to please tell them to continue their process out. So the good news is that everything's in Mister Comia's hands, although that is definitely not in any timely fashion to have a product for today.
Yep.
So my volleys, I want to think we can continue to see the next meeting and feel like we'll have. Everything well in order.
I, we can.
Description about the prior than matter.
Yeah, your batting average can take this hit, no problem, buddy.
Thanks, I appreciate that.
Alright, so. Yeah, I did, we need to put that down, so I'm gonna just put that at seven twenty. Do I hear a motion to continue the master plan discussion? Potential adoption to seven twenty P M on February twenty seven.
Dave Spina so moved.
Second, wait, take a second, second.
Roll call vote, Michael Doherty, aye.
Dave Spina, aye.
Dick Ottinger, aye.
Probably had it come.
Discussing items. Is anybody here on the side of mountain?
No, Miss Fazio asked that we also move that discussion to the twenty seventh, as will be opening. A public hearing on a very closely related to the matter and perhaps there's some overlap in discussion.
That's fine, we will do so. I am going to the housing production plan for a moment, since Art is here and ask him to come up for one thirty seven. So that he does not have to wait through the other. Alright, so what do you got?
I left the John couple, couple drawings. You guys thinking?
And I'm sure John has told you, as he has the other applicants for this for the five, but we are discussing that nonconforming bylaw. At the next, at the next meeting, we're gonna open it up for you, so.
Alright, alright, I've got, yeah, so basically what you see here, it's like a. Asking what we can do, what we can't do. One of them is we just want to pave that area. With favors because. Just to, it's a couple views, because when we're close to wetland and we notice. We took over a building originally with deep around and did everything's possible to prevent from. Water going to the basement. It seemed to work. We got gutters and pipes around just to kind of diversify away from a building. But particularly in this area, we noticed water kind of still leaks, but it's only when brooks go high. It's not great, nothing like that, just when it's. Somehow when the water goes up, it can't be feasible. We're thinking what we're gonna do. Kind of favors, kind of diversify a little bit, make sure it's off with little slight off of building and. Also, we want to see if it's, it's getting muddy also in that area when it's raining or something like that. If it's waters rise, if people, because we have a staircase over here. This staircase goes to more to the. Parking lot so it's paved, everything's fine. And this area, we would like to possibly to ask if it's possible to use occasionally for cooking outside. So it's another kind of thing we want to do. It's not extending the kitchen, there's nothing to do with that. It's more like. We ask the fire chief, it's something health department also concerned, what if it's possible to have. Cook on the real fire instead of gas or pellets or anything like that. Also, idea is to kind of be visible and show to the people and possibly be invited to backyard. Extend to the people houses, almost offer like an idea when we're gonna see it. If it's something, get the like a chef to home. We've already invited to bigger events like catering and businesses and facilities. This is the one thing. Another thing, we're asking if it's possible to put like temporarily. Cooler until we find out a way to maybe even make it eventually permanent. We're not sure yet, but we would like to. We have already that trailer parked in West Springfield and we asked them if it's possible to park by the side of the building and. We would like to have like a wide fence, just. Make sure it's not look trashy, you know. Doesn't look for people and and the third one, it's. They're the parking spot over here for employees only. And it just I know it's. Issue with parking and. What we can do and just employees only, like the parking lot.
So let's start with the last one and move back. How do they access those parking lots?
We have a basically dirt road over here. And.
But that's town owned land, isn't that road? It's not a, it's not a public.
No, it's not a public, no, no, and it's not for public too. It's not like just for.
No, but I don't think you, you're, you're allowed.
A focal plan like.
To access that road. I, I mean, unless if you are, then great. If you have a right of way in some way, great. I just don't know if you're. Technically allowed and we wouldn't be able to approve parking spots that don't have legal access to them. They wouldn't, they wouldn't, yeah, I, I, I don't think it's a. I do not think it's a bad idea to have, you put, you put your employee parking over there and then you have more parking. You know, in your own parking spot. I absolutely agree with that. I just don't know. If that is going to be legal or not, and it may be just that it's. And it may be worth a conversation with, I don't know, about having some. Right away to access those. Are for employees only and mark that way or whatever it is, right? So I, I fully would support the idea behind it. I just don't know at first blush whether it is legal. We can, I'm sure John will put his legal cap on and. Go down that path to figure out. I mean, I just. I think, I think the answer is it is probably not. Oh, but whether there's an ability to use it in some legal fashion, we can figure that out. Or whether it's, people are open to that conversation or who to talk to, whatever, so. That's my thought. Anybody else have anything? I mean. Two was the, basically a refrigerated trailer that you're. I was just put there. I guess putting aside the fact that. You'd have, you may have other boards that you need to, or departments that you may need to deal with for that. I'd have to look at the. Compared to bylaws. I'm not sure that that, I think you'd be able to do that on a temporary basis. I think. I, we can get back to you, but I think my, my gut says that on a temporary basis. That maybe allows.
On wheels.
Yeah.
Can be on wheels. Cannot be on wheels because at this point. We, we have had this temporary unit on the Springfield location. Later we won't appear for a little bit when we build this walking cooler. He also stays in the parking lot. Now it's parked in the Springfield, not in wheels, but we can put it. It used to be on wheels, we took it out, you know, it's kind of not hard to do. I don't want to make a foundation.
Yeah, let's just, let me, let, we'll take a deeper dive to see generally. I mean, I guess it's two parts. One is whether it is even. Allowed at all, and then secondly, whether it would need the board's permission to do so. And that's putting aside other boards and departments, but let me, we'll look into those two questions and get you an answer. And then third. I mean, I'm happy to, people have different viewpoints, but I'm not sure I see any need for a planning board. Well, two part, there's, it's two parts. One is I don't think there's any issue with the planning board putting in papers right there. To me, that's. That's a not issue for, that's not a planning board issue. Second part is cooking, so I do want to get to that, but so first part is fine, second part. And the issue becomes, I just need to think more about the nonconforming part of it, right? I mean, I, I don't. And look into the bylaws. I, I mean, it strikes me that if you were a restaurant and you wanted to throw. Smoker or whatever in the back, I'm not sure that's a problem. I don't think necessarily, but I don't. I don't think it is. That's my gut.
I'll be up to the health department.
I think that's a.
Health fire.
I think that's a health and fire and whatever else.
We did talk to them, they said first, find out to the planning board.
It's not, it's not a permanent structure. It's gonna be, you know, some kind of a smoker or. Grill because you, you talked about doing something in other people's yards. So this was something you'd bring with you.
Yes.
So it's not a permanent structure.
No, yeah.
So I think that would be up to the fire department and the, and the board to help just to make sure.
But we have to be careful too not to run afoul of the use outside of the original building.
No burning food.
Cooking it might be like, oh, okay, but then what happens if people get served outside? They're adding the seating outside and that, that air. Noise potential issues though, yeah, the caution because especially with the nonconforming. But the idea to us of favors and exterior. But being would not be, would be something we'd be opposed to, but it was up to. Other things would have to change first before we could go down that.
Yeah, yeah, I mean, I, yeah.
This is why I'm here. I just want to pinch idea and I know it needs to be time to think and all that stuff, so. And maybe we don't see something which you guys see it brought up. Because, you know, we, we have constant parties, like, you know, like events and they're like. When they look at the menu, a lot of times we want to like see something. Can you make a dish about a real fire? But it stays completely different from fire made soup and soup made on the stove. It's too, too big difference. So since last we had that idea, okay, like what about if we can make it here, people can see it? It's no interaction with people, but they can see it from windows on that, even if they can walk, it can be a barriers and stuff like that. Nobody interacts with that, but same thing that they can like pinch to serve it at somebody else's house, you know. And that way they can see equipment, they can see that can be brought up to them, how everything, you know. Kind of setup and stuff like that. So this is not the daily thing also. And again, we can even talk about that if it's, let's say, concerning to the neighbors or something like that. It can be. One day event and a week, let's say, you know, set up like Friday or Saturday or something like that and. See how it goes with that special allowance, let's say for that day of week. And if everybody's fine down the road, we can talk about extending to more days or tie or whatever, whatever. Talk to another data.
So I would say this, one is the easy answer is the papers. I think the rest of it, let us look into it, get back to you. Either about. You know, our, our feeling on it or sort of where to go and talk, who to talk to, right? So we'll get back to you on, on the rest of that.
Thank you.
Alright.
Alright, everyone. Wanted to provide the board. With an update. I'm gonna call it apparent project status. And town council discussions. About what are bylaws and subdivision regulations do provide. To compel performance. Over at the Noble Street subdivision, as I shared with you reading her two ago. The building inspector issued. A letter outlining a number of concerns, most of them. Related to, I'm gonna call them practical, on the ground, construction related concerns. It's fair to say that the projects owing to, who knows how many circumstances, but certainly it has spanned some period. Of the COVID nineteen emergency. Has been in a construction phase for an extended period of time. To the point that I believe the entirety of the roadway is in. I don't know, no more than a binder condition and the older sections have become to deteriorate. I only bring this up in comparison to another subdivision where roads left in finer status.
Comparison to another subdivision where uh roads left in finer status. And appeared to the point of where they. Apparently could not be sandwiched without significant effort. That's not necessarily the case here, but I it starts to paint a picture of. Progress. Hitting certain milestones. And being able to cleanly close out. Uh those areas. Back in. I think it was the late summer or at least the early autumn. Uh I met on site with a select board member. Um and resident um up there, Jason. Not station from my glass, nonetheless, uh and. Guess he saw Mars, but there's all of her to talk about. Uh the meaning for. Steady progress moving forward um. Within Kyle's work. And easily observed, we have the incomplete roadway. The culvert. For a wetland crossing. That uh would pass beneath the roadway that needs to be installed prior to the roadway. We have sidewalks. We have. Construction. Phasing related materials and debris. Within a certain yard area. Some drainage onto the roadway. Uh in areas that are not yet curbed. The list is reasonably extensive. Uh Mister Brown. Has a running punch list. Um in fact, when. His items were are shared with the developer that goes back to two thousand seventeen. Every construction project has its pickups. I recognize that there are always. There's always something that needs to be corrected. But the list is reasonably extensive. When I spoke with. Mister Saltmarsh. His intention was to. Work. At the intersection, you may recall this. Subdivision has a interior loop that comes back and intersects with the driveway. The work at that interior intersection. To bring drain structures. Out there, roughen the grades up to the point where we need to be placing material related to the crossing. And pay essentially that turnaround right there. And. To his credit, that portion has been constructed. The remaining issues out there, however, we don't see much progress now. In particular, my concern is that one of the. Delays that uh has been communicated related to the street crossing. But a conservation restriction. Was to be placed upon the open land. Open space, excuse me, at this. Flexible residential subdivision. Uh that document, despite having been reviewed by. Developers council, um towns council and conservation. Uh and possibly even in draft format at the state level was never circulated. Um back to the state. Uh and recorded. So the hiccup now we was uh discussed and let's say roughly or so a year ago that the. The forms have now changed. Uh on this state back and. For conservation restriction, there are new people in charge of signing. Documents, and so it needed to be. Recirculated. So that it could now be current. And recorded at the registry. Uh that has not yet taken place. I have. Sent out correspondence and hope that's not one of the ones that still stuck in certatory. I think I've sent up that uh to. State office that manages conservation restrictions to see if they have any um update on the status. Just to try to establish um. Some lines of communication rather than trying to get a solo from the developer. What this means is that the project right now is not in compliance. Uh under the special permit. Uh and in ways not under uh. Um so we have. Um apparent violations under zoning and we also enter into a scenario where we need to compel some degree of performance. So moving forward. The reason why I bring the blame board is not just as a news item. But uh. Owing to the nature of the performance agreement. Right now, we. Are holding a performance bond for six seven thousand dollars. And no lots. Uh at this particular subdivision. So. In order to. Both. Well, to use the term to put the developer on notice that he needs to provide. These specific performance items and we'll share that correspondence on the other side with the agency that. Um is issuing that bond. And follow their sequence. Uh we need to jointly. Issue. That notice from the planning board and from the building inspector and that as advised by town council. Uh we do have, so. I'm sorry, let me think I asked that back. So related to that. Uh Mister, I'm working with Mister Brown for DPW to. Develop an appropriate timeframe. Um for the completion of the on the ground items. Um I'm working with town council to figure out what's the appropriate timeframe given. For matters of the state um to resolve the conservation restriction a matter or at least let's get progress measurable progress. But it back and forth circulating back to the town um commissions. Or in boards signatures. And get that recorded. To help bring this project back into compliance. Think the whole point of this is that there is a rather we've got the better part of a month. Uh between here and our next meeting, uh if the board's inclined to do so, when that uh timeframe is developed. Uh when the notice is uh written and approved by town council. If you're so inclined to um authorize the chair to sign um the boards behalf. You can go that route if you're more comfortable waiting to see. The meat and potatoes of this document and prior to its issuance, you can go that direction as well. I wanted to at least wrap everybody's head around what the next step. Before I. Turn it over, I'll make a little footnote. I mentioned that we have. Uh violations. Under the special permit and the fifth subdivision um. Uh related. Violation, so we do have in our bylaws the opportunity to. Other um boards do. I don't think the intention uh as of yet is to say, oh. This is where it is. I think we have to provide that notice and opportunity respond first. But uh. In a nutshell, I think. In light of the deficiencies and uh that are noted by other other town departments. Uh and some mounting concerns and. A. I'm gonna say a general observation of a failure for meaningful. Advance better.
So there's 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 no properties. We have just a just a performance bond.
That's correct. We no longer hold uh any.
For six hundred thousand.
That's correct.
In but in the beginning of your your presentation, you had mentioned that. Things have backslid from being a solid surface to a binder. If you continue to get down this road without any forward movement on these things, that surface. And those areas are gonna deteriorate further to a point where they're gonna exceed the bond.
So let me be frank. Uh and also at the same time. I'll be direct without uh being blunt. I think that at the time that the uh dollar figure was contemplated. Um which frankly is only about roughly a year ago, but we have such a uh rapidly dynamic. Construction cost. To have to wrangle. Suffice it to say, if you have to fund it solely. From the. The bond, I think then you're going forward here. Having said that much. Moving forward, uh first of all, that bond has. It itself. Um a lifespan I believe of two years in our subdivision regulations. Before it is up again for discussion and there uh if I interpret town councils. Discussion correctly, there are also additional opportunities to. To increase the necessary security.
Up like another subdivision. And we need to keep an eye on those figures ego out.
So that will be part of uh a work with Randy. Um not only to look at the timeframe, but also to assign. To the best of our abilities, the construction values for what the for the infrastructure needs to be corrected.
Frank, is it Frank or John?
Alright, so what do you think was for well, first of all. What do you guys want to do first? Signature, do you want to just have me?
Yeah.
Sign it.
That vote, we get a vote that to authorize you to sign anything that pops up?
Sure, do we wanna see it first?
I don't care either way. I'm not running out to do it myself, but. It's up to you. I think we'd like to see it.
Just to to get an idea of what um.
You wanna see the property or the?
No, I wanted like at that point in time, here's the updated punch list of the issues. Here's Randy's assessment of them. Here's his projected timeframe for completion and that combined with is that. Okay, per town council, does that meet the muster? And if so, then yeah.
Reasonable, yeah, so we'll do that.
I mean, I trust you.
Absolutely. To a point, I mean, I'd obviously we thought with John uh.
I never give you a hard time and you screw up zoning.
Ouch!
Throw that out there.
I get your name, Doug.
It shows violence. Um alright.
But you know, the thing is, though, you got you got John. Then you got Frank.
Frankie the planner.
Frankie the planner.
Alright, so that's uh we'll we'll just deal with it. It'll it'll be brought to the board and I mean.
That's that's perfectly fine. I will distribute uh the at least the draft um uh once we. Have it available.
And then you're gonna follow up with that conservation restriction. Are you doing that or? Alright. I think that's it. Anything else on that?
That's enough for noble steam.
I think that is. Um alright, minutes.
Excuse me, Mike. Um real question, quick question. If a gentleman has a commercial vehicle parked on his property for extended period of time. That's a violation of our bylaws. Is that correct? And how do we enforce that? Do we have the building inspector to take care of that?
I don't think that has anything to do with us.
I thought because you couldn't leave commercial pardon?
I mean, other than if there's a special permit for. I mean, uh absent a bylaw that would. Prohibited that, which I'm not is not coming to mind. If there was a special permit. Which governed. What vehicles, if any, can park to a certain location and that would be a planning board issue, but. And frankly, it'd be a building inspector issue for this to be enforcement, but.
Okay, I'll take it up with him cuz it's not going too far. Okay. There you go.
Oh, is that a planning board member comment?
The bunnies and the fets.
I mean, I didn't. Oh, that's true.
The very first thing we had that.
I didn't even announce it before Dick jumped in.
Talk about we'll call it news items in the beginning uh and planning board business at the end. We are. Uh the time of year where we look where I have submitted much uh you're all surprised our uh next year's budget. For the purpose of being open, uh I. Have two footnotes, um essentially, we don't we don't have a lot of. Cost burdens until they arrive for a peer review or something like that. Um but I did throw in there. Um this setting aside of some funds. And whether or not it remains or called a planning board request or if they appropriately put it elsewhere before the. Uh acceptance of recording. Um there're gonna be some some legal fees and present fees and to a certain degree, some survey fees associated with that. Uh so that's gonna be in there for the quest and I. Perennially put a little asterisk in uh to let them know that at some point in time. There may need to be uh additional funds. Allocated to the town plan or owing to. Steady workload. Just as I look on that, I put that in their long term vision and hopefully somebody remembers it when. Uh the stuff hits the fan.
Quick question on that. Sure, she had something else that you were gonna jump in.
I do, but right ahead of it.
Um when is that due?
Oh, it was due.
Have you already submitted it? Change it or is it?
I imagine everything is malleable. Up to um. The point in time I sit down before the.
My suggestion. And in this is in part due to the conversation or the email conversation with Bert Hanson. Would be to put in some line item. For. Costs associated. With the master plan implementation committee and its initial. Here as a. And see, and we can talk about the number, but.
That seems like a reasonable but suggest. Uh I will coordinate that and see if that is revised. That has been uh what has been done. Uh thank you for getting off my list here. The last thing is that we also have an annual report to submit, so uh I will distribute my draft. Well, if you wouldn't mind sharing your comments with me via email. It'd be greatly appreciated.
Do we have to do school picture day or are they not putting in a school uh picture?
We're missing a member tonight, so it looks like we don't have to do a.
Alright.
Another planning board member comment?
I guess we are still on it.
I just wanted to let everybody else know that the annual CPTC, the Citizen Planner Training Collaborative is happening on March sixteenth. I have always found it enjoyable and they haven't yet listed out the. Presentations that are gonna be offered this year, but last year there was ones on master planning. And stuff like that, so it definitely came handy and especially wanted to mention that for Diane. Because you will need to complete at least two of those trainings.
And we have. I mean, those weren't that expensive.
Um it's about seventy, I think, and every time I've gone. The town clerk has lovingly sent a check to them on my behalf.
And I whether I don't know where the source of that check is coming from, but I think we do have. Some funds in our. Budgets for those types of things. I think we have been putting that in there, so. Um certainly. Diane, you can coordinate if you. Desire to do that with John. Get that um. Okay, any other planning board comments on this? Very full planning board comment. Section of the agendas. Um our. Minutes, January nine, everybody have a chance to look it on.
Yep.
Yes.
Yes.
Yeah.
We need to add some stuff. Um we just in our uh town planner comments, we took um mention of the. Letter from the building department regarding Noble Steed crossing, but we also discussed the letters he had sent to Mrs. Murphy's. As well as the water displacement issue on one fifty running hill, so. We wanted to add a couple of quick notes to write here. Yep, did some good work.
And now uh Mrs. Murphy's. Open back open again. Okay, anything else?
No, I didn't have to do for the night.
With that addition, do I hear a motion to approve the minutes for January ninth?
Dave Spina so moved.
Dick Cut singer second.
I'll vote Michael Doherty, aye.
Dave Spina, aye.
Dick Cut singer, aye.
Sutton, aye.
Jessica Thornton, aye.
Oh, never mind it.
January twenty-third.
As yet further revised. There, Jessica was kind of pointing out that uh as I bring the documents in and out of our cloud, yep, uh we get drastic permitting errors.
Hey, John?
Yes.
There was a typo on their second page. Toward the bottom where you said emotion was made and seconded, yeah, Cut singer two, you don't have a special key to, that's all.
Yeah. Certainly on the first page, actually.
Gotcha.
The very first, well, actually, second line, I guess, the hybrid meeting.
Then I may see that it's possible, I may be spacing errors in this.
John, John, just wanna let you know, I read it.
Years from now, we're gonna be judged on that space, yeah.
Um, all right, with those changes, do I hear a motion to approve the minutes of January twenty-third?
Dave Spina so moved.
Dick Cut singer second.
Royal Pope, Michael Doherty, aye.
Dave Spina, aye.
Dick Cut singer, aye.
David Sutton, aye.
Jessica Thornton, aye.
Okay. Your motion.
We no further business, I make a motion, we close the meeting.
Dave Spina second.
All those in favor, say aye. All right.
All those opposed, we don't wanna hear them.
Good night, Dick.
Good night, people. Thank you.